This time I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting as it is duly posted by the Harlingen City Commission to order and call upon Commissioner Victor Lee Allen to lead us in an invocation.
If you'll play with me, first of all, Merry Christmas to everybody. For unto us a child is born, to us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulder, and his name shall be called Wonderful Counselor Mighty God Everlasting Father Prince of Peace. Father, please give us the wisdom in our deliberations and bless everyone who comes in our path. Bless all of our employees and provide safety to all of our first responders. Bless all of the men and women who keep our country safe. May we always honor you and glorify your name in the mighty name of Jesus except our worship and our prayers. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one is the word recognition. Do we have?
Three names.
Do you have?
It doesn't have one.
That's okay. No. It's good. It just came up. No, it was just driving us. It just came to me. So I went home a little while ago and tried to know because I never tell you. You had to tell you. It's beautiful.
All right. We'd like to recognize Chris Barneski. Chris here. There he is. For agreeing to serve along the Harlingen Utility Ward. Obviously, there are important boards that we have in our community and for the service that every resident on campus can feel service in. So we do appreciate your continuing to serve. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Belinda Palovino agrees to serve on our key, promising, beautiful advisory board. Belinda, thank you so much for agreeing to serve on this board. She does so much for our community because in keeping our beautiful place, Belinda, for the important part of what we've tried to provide for many years to our community because it really does promote not only quality of life at all, but promotes current adult services in our community. So, thanks.
Thank you.
The EFL. Kristen, read the sermon on museum board. We want to thank her for her agreement to serve. That's a beautiful asset that we have up here. We need to improve it all the time and so we appreciate her and to steward that facility. Thank you. Item two is the recognition of our vital statistics department for having received a five-star award. So, I would like to introduce the minutes, local registrar, Yana Vargas. If you're registrar, the lady that appoints that, if you're registrar, you should report these and any other things you want to light up. Everyone, so. We want, you know, this is another outstanding achievement because probably so many of our departments and so many of our personnel here are through the process of doing to make us stand out among the cities throughout the state of Texas. Out of nearly 300 local registrars in Texas, only 96 cities require the exemptary award, making this the 20th year in a row. Five-star exemptary award. Our general works on island vital statistics officers who understand the importance of vital statistics and its impact on the citizens of Texas. This award honors vital statistics offices that go above and beyond the duty of support and that certificates. And so this is awarded by the Texas Department of State Health Services and for excellence in vital statistics registration processes awarded on December 4th, 2019. Thank you for going above and beyond to register your records in insurance, customer service, security, data quality for Texas. So congratulations once again. Congratulations. Guys, fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
All right. Will you say anything?
Um, we'll say very good.
Say it first.
Yes, we will.
I don't think I've ever had Yana say anything.
I'll wait for you after the meeting.
All right. Item three is the presentation about Javier Mendez, Parks and Recreation Director regarding the duties and functions of the Parks and Recreation Department. Javier?
The Sir Mayor, City Commission, City Manager. Got a few slides here. I'm going to try to go through them quickly but effectively. The, let's see. Yeah. So, I'm going to try to cover the three departments that I oversee, which is the Parks and Recreation, Public Buildings, and the Tony Butler Golf Course. So, under Parks and Recreation, under our administration, we have four employees, the director, myself, and my assistant, and then two administrative secretaries. We oversee three departments, the Parks and Recreation, Public Buildings, Texas, I mean, Tony Butler Golf Course, for a total operational budget of $5.7 million combined. We work on grants for many of our improvements in operations. We rent public facilities such as the Community Center, Casa de Sol, Cultural Arts, the Tony Butler Golf Course Meeting Room, plus six park pavilions and park facilities. Our annual revenues for pavilion rentals is about $59,214 and $168,000 for building So, under parks, we have 33 maintenance employees, one park superintendent, three technicians, and then the 23 grounds maintenance employees. Seventeen of those are full-time and 12 of them are part-timers. We have 24 parks and 612 acres of parkland, which we can boast that for having more than more parks per capita in Harlingen. We have a, why did I mention that? So, staff maintains 30 canal banks, eight city and state right-of-ways, 15 city building sites. We maintain 47 sports fields, mowing and field markings, for a total of 873 times a year. We have 21 tennis courts that we maintain and then 21 miles of multi-use trails. Staff provides support for 40 cosponsored and city events per year. Our budget is $1.9 million.
Javier, that's 612 acres. That's parkland only, not city buildings that we also maintain?
That is correct. And that does not include right-of-ways or islands or anything. That is strictly parks.
And we do 612 acres of parkland with 17 full-time and 12 part-time.
Yes, sir.
And 21 miles of?
And 20, I'm sorry. Yes, sir, Commissioner. Thank you. 21 miles.
And so, under our Recreation Department, staff oversees construction, workers provide service to our residents such as ballet, ninjutsu, dance class, painting, et cetera. And there's about 15 of those classes. Then we have seven free classes, which are zumba, Pilates, chair exercise, mobile cooking, and yoga. Staff also organizes eight city events listed on the slide, and we also manage Tu Salud Cinquenta, which is a grant from the UT School of Public Health. Plus, we oversee the summer playground with about 180 children from ages five through 10 during the summer. So, under our athletic division, we have 11 employees. 10 of those are seasonal, and they're mainly from our, for our summer track. And so, we're in charge of 11 league contracts. We run our summer track program with 125 participants annually, our city adult softball league, and our summer seven-on-seven flag football. And all these are city programs that we run.
So, these are city, not, this doesn't include all the other stuff that's out there. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Just a city sponsored? Not city-sponsored, but city-directed?
Right.
Okay.
And then, so, under our aquatics, we have three pools, Pendleton, which is a 25-yard pool, Victor Pool, which is 55 yards, and Long Sea Hill, which is a 50-yard pool, and then One Splash Park. Our aquatic supervisor is American Cross certified as lifeguard instructor, instructor trainer, certified pool operator, and aquatic facility operator. So, we have 37 employees annually, one full-time, seven part-timers, and 29 seasonal. We oversee three youth contracts and two adult program contracts under aquatics. And we've hosted many events over the past year at our pools, including triathlons, swim meets, Texas Parks and Wildlife Department and Board Patrol Safety Training, MMA scuba diving testing, and our own Harlingen firefighters water safety training. So, this slide here, I won't go through all of them, but these are some projects that we completed in the last two, three years. But one of them that I want to, or a couple of them that I want to point out and acknowledge is the all-inclusive playground, the Meg Jordan Trail, Vestal Improvements, the mountain bike trail, Hugh Ramsey and the ADA ramps that we built at the Pendleton and Victor So, our upcoming projects, again, I won't go through all of those, but there's a list there of projects that we want to try to construct or accomplish this coming year. The soccer field lighting at Vestal, the lights are already up, but I didn't put in and completed because we're still ongoing. We're going to replace the playground at Hunter Park. Of course, we're under construction on Destination Park. The trail is also under design for the Arroyo Por Lao. And then, we're also under construction on the two-port volleyball court next to Long Sea Hill Pool. And, of course, our goal is to apply for grants for Hugh Ramsey Nature Park, the trail at Destination, and then the Blue Trail along the Arroyo, which is the kayak trail. And then, of course, the tennis center is also under design, which we're hoping to bid out by January. So, these are some of the photos that I got of some of the projects that we're working on. This is Destination Park. Up there on top, we have the Henry Roberts Mountain Bike Trail, and, of course, we built a bridge across one of the crossings, and it's still ongoing. We're working with the volunteers to be able to clear the path. And over here in the bottom left-hand corner, we got a picture of the bench that was, well, benches that were donated from Rotary, and then the ADA restroom at Long Sea Hill, and then the playground that was installed at Vestal Park. Up on the top left-hand corner is the concept that we want to work with for the installation of the new playground at Hunter Park. And then, in the bottom is the pit that we've already dug for the sand volleyball court. Sand has already been hauled in and has been piled up, so we just, we're getting ready to spread it. The middle bottom photo is LED lights at Vestal, and then the bottom right is the ADA ramp that we installed at Victor Pool. And then, of course, the top right is the basketball court that was constructed at Rangerville. And here's some more photos of events that we have throughout the year. Halloween on Jackson, Arroyo Lighting. There are summer track winners in our aerobics.
That's my favorite.
Which one?
Aerobics.
Aerobics. So, now I'll get into our public buildings. And so, we have 17 full-time employees, one building superintendent, one crew leader, five technicians, nine custodial employees. We maintain 51 buildings with over 550,000 square feet. We process about 1,380 work orders annually. We manage the rental of five buildings, including the golf course meeting room. And then, staff assists with special events. They spend about 850 man-hours on those events. And then, we also perform monthly testing and inspection of all emergency generators. And our maintenance and operation budget for public buildings is $1.3 million. That's excluding capital improvements. And so, these are some of the projects that we completed last year, the years, two years. Of course, with the rooftop unit here at City Hall, the units at the library. We've painted and cleaned up the museum building. We're installing right now lights at the auditorium, the aisle lighting. We renovated the fire station number one after the flooding of June, and replaced the roofs at fire station six and seven. And here's a list of projects that are coming up that we would like to work on, is to do an assessment of the AC units at the police department, replace the chiller at the Casa de Sol. We want to paint and seal the exterior of the library, the walls, and then we also want to build a climate control storage for our citywide permanent files. That'll be at the EOC. So, here's a couple of pictures of projects we worked on. Community Center, of course, the City Commission chambers, the Diaz, the executive session room, municipal court, clerk window. Top right-hand corner is where the way it looks before, and the bottom is where the way it looks now. We've expanded and added a new window. We've worked on the public works warehouse, and then the rooftop units at the library. So, here's our buildings that we rent, Casa de Sol, Casa de Sol, Harlingen Community Center and Cultural Arts. The only one I don't have here is the meeting room at the golf course. And so, the golf course, we have nine full-time employees. We had 10 as of October. We moved one over to Parks and Rec as far as the groundskeeper to help fill a position that we had vacant. Of course, we have 27 holes, chipping and putting greens, and one driving range. Under the pro shop, we have four full-time employees, four part-timers, and of course, our room rental. We, of course, we purchased 65 new carts. And under the restaurant, we have one full-timer and two part-timers to operate the restaurant. And the revenues, of course, that we collect for the entire golf course is $784,309. These are some of the tournaments that we have had in pass there at the golf course. Of course, Chamber Commerce, the high schools, Boys and Girls Club of San Marino, Senate versus House, and the Rotaries. So, these are some photos of some of the work that we've done on the greens. We've aerated the greens, then top dressed them, and then here's a photo on the bottom of the new golf carts. And then, here's a photo of kids that we've, that have run through our summer clinics and first heat program that we have. And so, it's been very successful. We received a grant from the Bali Baptist, who actually was a Harlingen Wellness Coalition, to be able to purchase equipment and be able to hire staff to run the program for us. And I believe that's it. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? So, that's what Javier does. Wondering all the time.
He don't do nothing.
Did it scare you when you wrote it all down in one place?
Yeah. He asked to meet with me for about 30 minutes. I said, "No, no, no, wait. I know what's coming."
All right. Well, we have a great department, Parks and Recreation Department, public buildings. We appreciate the work that you guys do, everybody in your department, and thank you for doing such a great job. And, you know, it's all about quality of life, and everything that you just put up there on that screen really enriches our lives and the citizens of our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item four is the approval of the minutes of the joint City Commission and EDC meeting of October 2nd. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item consent agenda, items five through E is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item six, consideration of possible action to approve lease agreement between the City of Harlingen and the Lower Oregon Valley Development Council, Valley Metro, for the use of the property constructed located at 201 north T Street in Harlingen.
Mayor City Commission, City Manager, this is a standard lease agreement with Valley Metro to where they currently operate now. It mirrors the lease agreement that they had with Cameron County when they were the owners of it, and so, staff recommends approval and legal has reviewed it.
There a motion to approve the lease agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item seven, consideration of possible action to approve ordinance of first reading abandoned at vacate, 0.0588 acre tract being a 10-foot wide utility easement comprised of a portion of an existing 10-foot wide utility easement being over and across lot one, block six, target subdivision, and over and across lot three of the replat of lots one through three, block one of Costa del Sol subdivision, lot one and two, target subdivision, and consideration of possible action to approve an alternative utility easement being a 0.1043 acre, of an acre tract being 10-foot wide easement over and across lot one, block six, target subdivision, lot three of the replat of lots one through three, block one of Costa del Sol subdivision, and lots one and two, target subdivision located at 952 Dixieland Road.
Mayor City Commission, good evening. As you know, TJ Maxx is coming to Harlingen. They should start construction in a few weeks, but in order for the project to happen, a utility easement is to be relocated. This is the Target Store. TJ Maxx is going up here, just north of the Target Store, adjacent to the building. This is the existing utility easement. In red, it's going to be removed and relocated this way, and a fire hydrant is going to be moved from here to here, and this will allow the project to happen. The city engineer and Harlingen Water Works, everybody's in agreement. And also Craig Carenci, the manager of the company, is here in case you have any questions.
Okay.
We recommend approval.
Yeah. Read the cap, can you read the caption of the ordinance?
An ordinance abandoning and vacating a .0508 acre tract being a 10-foot wide utility easement comprised of a portion of an existing 10-foot wide utility easement being over and across lot one, block six, target subdivision, and over and across lot three of the replat of lots one through three, block one of Costa del Sol subdivision, and lots one and two of target subdivision located at 952 Dixieland Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Item eight, consideration of possible action to adopt active violence incidents, standard operating guideline as an addendum to the city's emergency management plan proposed by Chief Julio Overbia and Police Chief Mike Kester and EMS Director Bill Aston. Gentlemen?
Mayor Commissioners, good evening. We come before you as your public safety team. Consideration to adopt inter-agency interdisciplinary law enforcement, fire, EMS, standard operating guidelines for response as part of our emergency management plan annexes that would allow us to have any potential, response to any potential active violent incidents in our community to ensure coordination between agencies and the safety of all emergency responders and the citizens in our community. We work real hard as a team. Chief Kester, Director for EMS, Bill Aston are both here with us, and they want to also share a few words.
Mayor Commissioners, unfortunately, in this day and age, we have to plan for these events. It's a matter of when it happens, not if it's going to happen. So, this plan just basically brings us all together, so we're all on the same page and we can coordinate our efforts in the event when this does happen. So, the next step really in this is, after you guys approve it, would be to, we'll start doing training and working together and preparing for this type of event.
Thank you, Chief.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening. I agree with both chiefs. It's sad that we are at a place and time where we have to have added to our annexes in our emergency plans and the various communities' response plan. I feel great. The chief took the lead in this. I appreciate that. We all work together, Fire Department, EMS, and law enforcement, and we need to be able to function as a team when we respond to events such as this, which we hope and pray will never have happened in our community. But we do need an emergency response plan and how we approach a scene like this, and number one is to serve the public but keep our personnel safe. And it's evolving out there, and we've had a lot of meetings, but I appreciate Chief Rubio and Chief Kester, you and all of your departments for the work that you've done on this. Thank you.
This is, again, Mayor Commissioners, this is part of our annexes, and once it's approved, we can continue to move forward, like I mentioned to you, with the training that we will put together as one public safety team. Staff recommends approve.
I take the motion for an approval.
Second.
All right. Motion is second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Thank you all for updating these procedures. I think it's very, very important. Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution to open a brokerage account with TD Ameritrade to accept a donation for the Harlingen Public Library and designate the city manager as the signatory.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners and City Manager. We have a resolution to open a TD Ameritrade account to accept a stock donation for the Harlingen Public Library, which will be open and under the direction of the city manager. Will be hopefully to accept the donation, cash the stock, and then close the account.
Okay.
And the value of it is about $51,570.
Excellent. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Thank you all for updating these procedures. I think it's very, very important. Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution to open a brokerage account with TD Ameritrade to accept a donation for the Harlingen Public Library and designate the city manager as the signatory.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners and City Manager. We have a resolution to open a TD Ameritrade account to accept a stock donation for the Harlingen Public Library, which will be open and under the direction of the city manager. Will be hopefully to accept the donation, cash the stock, and then close the account.
Okay.
And the value of it is about $51,570.
Excellent. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Thank you all for updating these procedures. I think it's very, very important. Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution to open a brokerage account with TD Ameritrade to accept a donation for the Harlingen Public Library and designate the city manager as the signatory.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners and City Manager. We have a resolution to open a TD Ameritrade account to accept a stock donation for the Harlingen Public Library, which will be open and under the direction of the city manager. Will be hopefully to accept the donation, cash the stock, and then close the account.
Okay.
And the value of it is about $51,570.
Excellent. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Thank you all for updating these procedures. I think it's very, very important. Item nine, consideration of possible action to approve a resolution to open a brokerage account with TD Ameritrade to accept a donation for the Harlingen Public Library and designate the city manager as the signatory.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners and City Manager. We have a resolution to open a TD Ameritrade account to accept a stock donation for the Harlingen Public Library, which will be open and under the direction of the city manager. Will be hopefully to accept the donation, cash the stock, and then close the account.
Okay.
And the value of it is about $51,570.
Excellent. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, this is just formality, right?
Yes. This is that the request of the folks that are giving us a grant, they want to set up this way so that we can receive the funds.
Great.
So, that's the only reason we're setting this up.
Okay.
All right. So, yeah, so by, they donate, they give you, they give us the stock, they get to take the, they get to take the tax deduction at the full stepped-up basis rather than selling the stock and give us the money where they would have to pay a capital gains tax on it.
Right.
So, that's why we have to set up an account to accept the stock. Because ordinarily, we don't, we don't have stock.
I read that. I just want to make sure I read it correctly. We're setting this up in order.
And I promise I won't start buying and selling.
Okay. All right. So, we have a motion is second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item ten, Consideration of Possible Action to Approve a Resolution Authorizing Mary to Approve Renewal of a Three-Year Service Agreement Between Motorola Solutions and the City of Harlingen Police Department for the Monitoring and Maintenance of the Emergency Services Radio Communications Equipment in the amount of a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eighty-three dollars and two cents. Chief?
Mayor, Commissioners, again, like stated, this is a renewal. We have a contract with Motorola as a three-year agreement, and the locks are sent at that price for the three years. This agreement will be the three annual installments of fifty-two thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and thirty-four cents for each of the three years. We have it budgeted for this year, and we will budget for the next two years, assuming you approve that, and we move forward.
Do they, do they come out and actually work on them, or is it as, as needed basis, or do they come out and?
Yeah, they, they come out.
Clean them out?
If something happens, we call them, and they show up.
Right.
And no charge, otherwise there'd be a significant charge.
Otherwise, it'd be an hourly type thing or a trip charge type?
Right. Right. And this is, I believe, about a five percent increase over the previous three years.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the renewal?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Item eleven, Consideration of Possible Action to Approve an Interlocal Agreement Between the City of Harlingen and Cameron County to Collaborate in the Update to the Cameron County Hazard Mitigation Plan, Authorize the City Manager to Execute the Agreement. Charles?
Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. The current hazard mitigation plan that the City of Harlingen has in, in play, yes, does, is due for renewal May twenty twenty. And so in, in your desk, I left a copy of a proposed draft of the interlocal agreement, which would authorize us to once again work hand-in-hand with Cameron County to update our plan. Under the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand, we are required, every community that wants to apply for FEMA funding for disaster mitigation-type projects, needs to have a plan in place. And so we've had one for the last four years, four and a half years, and it's due for renewal. And so the, the end result of this is that we'll have an updated plan, or at least start working on that. We have had preliminary conversations with Cameron County, and a consultant will be brought on board to help us with this process. And there will be requirements for public hearings, for public meetings, and so forth, and this will get the ball rolling for that.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the interlocal agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, second. Is there any, any other discussion? This is obviously something very important that needs to get done and updated, so we're eligible to receive grant funding.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Item, our second and final reading to approve and adopt an ordinance amending the revenue and expenditure budget for the City of Harlingen, Texas for fiscal year October first, twenty nineteen, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty. Total budget revenues will increase to seventy-eight million, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, and total budget expenditure will increase to eighty-five million, two hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars, respectively, providing for publication of the caption of this ordinance and ordaining other matters.
So this is our second and final reading. There were no changes from the first one, other than, as noted on the bottom, on the motor vehicle fund. There was a modification in the way we did our allocation from the vehicle replacement fund. And so in our original budget, we removed the expenditure but didn't remove the revenue from the motor vehicle fund. So this is amended to the correct amount.
All right. Is there a motion to approve? Well, we need to have the, so you're trying to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the revenue and expenditure budget for the City of Harlingen, Texas for fiscal year October first, twenty nineteen, through September thirtieth, twenty twenty. Total budget revenues will increase to seventy-eight million, nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine, and total budget expenditures will increase to eighty-five million, two hundred and seventy-four, eight hundred and thirty-two, respectively, providing for publication of this caption of this ordinance and ordaining other matters relating to the foregoing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Item thirteen, Board Appointments.
Javier Delion to the Museum Advisory Board.
Javier's going to be busy. I have no, I'm sorry.
Anybody down here?
No, sir.
All right. We have a motion to approve Board Appointments.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Now, before we adjourn, I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, great holidays, and hope that you all have a wonderful time with your families. I'm sure that...
Our presents are where?
All right. Thank you.
Just wanted to know.
All right. Merry Christmas. Thank you all very much. Good night. We adjourn.